Takes us into the comments and questions from the floor. Item 3.01, Representatives of the PTA. Is there anyone from the PTA here tonight? 3.02, Representatives of School Employees. All right. 3.03, Representative of the Mishawaka Education Foundation.
Good evening. So in recent news, the Mishawaka Education Foundation had an amazing turnout for the Run the Future Dinner Auction Drive. In total, we raised over $25,000 and we had over 200 people present, including 50 MHS fine arts students. Everyone enjoyed the student entertainment and the fun fundraising event. The MEF feels very blessed to have such great support in the Mishawaka community. And just one last reminder, there is a new classroom grant deadline for Monday, November 9th at 3:30 PM. Thank you for your time. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. That takes us to item 3.04, General Public. Two people have signed up to address the board. First on the list is Mr. David Strawn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Barker, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Strawn. I reside at 305 George Street in Mishawaka. I have no group affiliation. I'm not a vendor contractor, employee, retired aduitant, or creditor of the school city in Mishawaka, or any of school cities vendors. I have the following questions relative to this evening's agenda. Item 8.01, Learning by Design Update. On Saturday past, I had a conversation with a longtime veteran high school science teacher employed by an Indiana Public School Corporation operating in Marion County, Indiana. This Marion County Public School Corporation has more than 4,500 students enrolled in grades nine through 12. For privacy reasons, I shall refer to this science teacher as Teacher X. During our conversation, Teacher X made an unsolicited statement that student academic performance in Teacher X's classroom for the first grading period of the 2020-2021 school year were the worst Teacher X has ever experienced in a single grading period over Teacher X's entire teaching career. Numerically, Teacher X gave out more F grades to students in the first grading period of the 2021 school year than in all prior grading periods combined since Teacher X first became a teacher. Teacher X decided to check the academic results with other teaching colleagues in the same building. Teacher X discovered similar academic results had occurred in other subject matter areas taught at this Marion County High School. And the question is, what were school cities' academic results system-wide for their first grading period of the 2020-2021 school year compared with the same grading period in the 2019-2020 school year? Items 9.04 and 9.05, while I don't object and I support the transfer of the property to the History Center in South Bend, the question is, is the detailed inventory of the personal property to be transferred going to be performed? If so, when? Which party will bear the cost of such inventory? And will school city receive a complete copy of the inventory results? And lastly, item 9.07, Recommendation to Approve the Purchase of the Fortinet Firewall. Eight questions here, and Mr. Madlin has been given a copy of my questions prior to the meeting. Question one, what is the funding source for the purchase of this software? Question two, how many proposals were received? Question three, from the set of proposals received, how many proposals were technically acceptable? Question four, what is the term of a software license? What type of license is it? Are option renewals available to current licensees? And if so, at what current cost? Question five, precisely where is this software locally hosted? Question six, which peers recommended purchasing the Fortigate 1100E software? Question seven, item number three of the background statement is confusing. Were three separate cybersecurity software products tested? Or were three separate school city of Mishawaka sites tested utilizing the Fortigate 1100E software? Please clarify. And lastly, was the Fortigate 1100E software solicited by way of a state mandated cooperative purchasing agreement? That concludes my remarks for this evening, Mr. President. Thank you for your time and attention.
And thank you, Mr. Strawn. The other person to sign up to address the board is Annette Frost. And when you get to the podium, if you could just please, you know, give your name and confirm your address.
Okay. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Annette Ernst, 603 O.C. Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. I'm going to make this just short and to the point. I know the decision has been made about the museum, what's going to be happening to it going to South Bend. I'd just like you to know that I started as a volunteer about in 2006, helping with the previous one, Peggy. And with her, the company I worked for, we were able to get grants for the company as a volunteer grant by putting in like between 38, 40 hours, which was numerous grants for a couple of years. And working with Peggy, I helped, you know, enter items into the museum, how to categorize. And I learned a lot about the museum and how items were kept in place and moved around. And then I also had the benefit of working with one of her best volunteers who stayed with her for a long time, and she was an ex-schoolteacher. Her name was Lucy Mix, who passed away. After that, Peggy left. We had a new one. Her name was Leslie, and she took over for several years. She decided to leave when she found out the museum could never give her a paycheck, that we would lose the TAF money, and she would have to find a way to help subsidize her own paycheck. She had understood that she could've stayed with the museum, but she decided to leave and go to Museum of Kalamazoo. So she was able to use her experience here as a stepping stone working with the museum. Donations have made, money has made for the years. I'm just disappointed that nothing better could've turned out to keep it after 75 years. Things change, times change.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Can you take your mask off?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I can't. I can't hear a word.
Okay. Would you like me to start off really quick? I'm so sorry. I'm so used to having a mask on and not being allowed to take it off. Okay. Rewind. Good evening, everybody. My name is Annette Ernst. My address is 603 O.C. Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. I'm a resident of Mishawaka. And I started in 2006 as a volunteer for the Handel-Lundell Children's Museum with Peggy when she was the museum director. With Peggy, she had a number one volunteer. Her name was Lucy Mix, who was an ex-schoolteacher who helped her a lot. Working with them was a joy. I learned how to add stuff into the system, accession numbers, how they categorize, how stuff is moved in and out of storage, and taken care of. When Peggy retired, well, before I should say that, the company I worked with at the time, it got me interested in the museum because we could do volunteer grants. With this one, I was able to, if I did between 38, 40 hours, they would donate a $250 check. So over several years of Peggy, I was able to contribute a couple of checks to the company to help with the museum, which I thought was nice, making money for somebody else. Now, when Peggy left the company, I should say about retired, Leslie Schroeder took over, and she stayed for several years. And with that, I moved on to a different company. And with that company, they were able to give like a $1,000 check to the museum and several gift cards for fundraising activities and everything. So even though I couldn't donate money for working, I was still able to help aid a little in the museum. Now, when Leslie left, she left because she knew she would have to subsidize her own self since you were losing the TAF money to help pay for her employment. So instead of staying another year, she had looked for a chance to go elsewhere, and she went to Kalamazoo. So she kind of abandoned us, left us on our own, not knowing what to do. So at that time, Jan was hired to help us with the transition, to get things moving. And a transition team was moved, was started, because they figured with a transition team, they could at least meet two times a month instead of the advisory board every three months and more could be accomplished. So I'm just sorry that, you know, nothing better could've happened. I know it was started by a teacher 75 years ago. Sister City with Japan was started by a schoolteacher. The school hasn't a lot. Things change, and I just worked in those bitter circumstances that something old could've continued on where other museums closed, that we couldn't sustain more funding, more grants, donations. But that's in the past, and I just hope that moving forward, that with South Bend, they take good care of it like the city has. You know, it's been a proud and joy of the city, and things change. You go from telephones to cell phones. I know you've had a busy year. This is probably not one of the most important issues of you, but, you know, school children did like attending it. The school I went to, I was not allowed to attend it because we weren't a public school where I was from. But the thing is, it's... It was nice of you guys to help keep the museum alive by bringing it to AMN School, which is very much appreciated and was enjoyed for the time that it could. I'm sorry it has to move on, and like I said, I just hope that South Bend appreciates it and takes good care of it. You do have traveling exhibits that are on loan, but I guess that wasn't one of the things possible with this. But I just wish it was an option or grants or... I don't know what else to say, just I'm very disappointed that we're not allowed to keep it and that the school system has helped. They started a museum. Like I said, another schoolteacher helped start our Sister City with Japan. So thank you for your time. I'm just disappointed it's leaving. I'm sorry we let you down, and I just wish more could've been done or accessed. But it's time to move on, and I know you guys have had a busy year with COVID-19. I know you had to add on to access security to the schools, which costs money and lockdowns, you know, in case anything happened. The company I work for now, we had to go through that. We had to go through a stimulator shooting, so we would know what to do. It has been a bad year with COVID-19. Obviously, at the last meeting, I know what the teachers are going through. I know how companies are going through and closing because of business. So I'm just, you know, so sorry it's happened, but you tried. And I just wish we could've been more able to keep it alive in Mishawaka. So thank you for your time.
We appreciate you talking on behalf of your service here, and it is a hard thing to let go of. But I'm sure we're going to hear about it, so... But thank you for speaking to us.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for all you've done. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ernst. This takes us to the Consent Agenda section of our agenda. Item 4.01, Approval of the Minutes of the October 14, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Board of School Trustees. It is recommended that the amendments of the October 14, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Item 4.02, Approval of Bills, Warrants, and Payroll. It is recommended that the bills, warrants, and payroll in the amount of $1,348,896.35 be approved for payment from the appropriate funds. Item 4.03, Approval of September Financial Report. It is recommended that the board approve the September 2020 financial report as presented. Item 4.04, Approval of the Consent Agendas. Their recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This takes us into the Vision Initiative section of the agenda. Item 5.01, Roadmap to Reopening Plan Update Number Eight. Mr. Barker, Ms. Foley, Ms. Hickel, Mr. Calderon, Mr. Laban.
Thank you, President Curry and members of the board. At our last school board meeting on October 14th, there was a lot of discussion about the teacher workload challenges that we're experiencing, that our teachers are experiencing as a result of us returning to in-person learning. And tonight, myself, Mrs. Foley, the Mishawaka Education Association President, Ms. Hickel, Mr. Calderon, and Mr. Laban will present a recommendation to the board to ease that burden on our teachers. So tonight, we're going to go through that presentation. And I know at our last school board meeting, you heard from Ms. Foley, and I would like for you to hear from her again. If you'd go to the next slide there. We shared this with you at the last meeting, and it was basically us talking about trying to balance the needs of our students with the needs of our teachers. And that's what we try to do daily. Certainly, in a pandemic, it's been a much greater challenge for us. I want to start by thanking Mrs. Foley and the Mishawaka Education Association for their leadership and partnership. Also, just so you know, the last I looked, Mrs. Foley's presentation has now been viewed over 408,000 times across the world. I think that meets the definition of viral, and I think it speaks to the fact that it resonated with people. There are many people across the country and world who could relate to the plight of our school city of Mishawaka teachers, and I think it relates to many teachers everywhere. So tonight, I would like to start by asking Ms. Foley to come forward and talk about the process that we've gone through over the last few weeks since that last board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Good evening. There's been quite a whirlwind of activity since the last time I spoke to you here. Immediately following our last board meeting, I asked the building representatives of the Mishawaka Education Association to gather feedback from our teachers. We asked for issues, concerns, suggestions, solutions, and ideas. The result was a 40-page document that we compiled in less than 48 hours and submitted to the TAC discussion group. The plan being laid out for you tonight is a direct response to the contents of that document, and it represents our best attempt to relieve the common concerns shared by teachers. It was an intensely cooperative effort between teachers, principals, and senior leadership. Please understand that teachers do not take lightly any reduction in instructional minutes. Were we not in such extraordinary times, such a thought would be unfathomable. Please note, too, that there are still major concerns that we cannot address at this time, particularly with regard to online class sizes, the need for simultaneous instruction at the secondary level, and the management of services for our exceptional learner population. We continue to work together, MEA and SCM, to manage those concerns moving forward. Thank you for your willingness to respond to your teachers' needs.
Thank you, Ms. Foley.
Thank you, Mrs. Foley.
You know, she points out that we don't solve every problem, and tonight's recommendation will not solve every problem, but we do feel like it's a solid recommendation to help the majority of our teachers and their experiences that they're having. So we move to the next slide. This slide tonight represents the recommendations that we're making tonight to address those issues of teacher workload. And the first one you can see is involving, revolves around time. Certainly, we heard loud and clearly from not just Ms. Foley, but the document that was shared with us, that our teachers need more time to be able to do their jobs effectively and serve our students better. And then the other three items are really more around our communications on the topics of cleaning and breakfast and curriculum pacing, and we'll talk about each of those things tonight. On the next slide, you'll see what we have as a current schedule for our school day on the left, which you're all aware of, and then what we're proposing as a change on the right to those minutes. And to see that more clearly, if you go to the next slide, it drills down and basically just looks at the specific changes that we're recommending to our school day. We're recommending that we reduce our elementary school day by 45 minutes and that we finish at 2:15 PM. Reducing the middle school day also by 45 minutes to be dismissed at 2:35. And then reducing the high school day by 40 minutes to be, for students to be released at 2:30. Please know that this is a very difficult recommendation for me to make as a superintendent. I know our students need time in school. We know that, and in fact, we're in the beginning stages of forming a committee to look at school day schedules for the following school year post-pandemic to increase the instructional minutes of our students. So we want everyone to know that this recommendation is a short-term solution in response to teaching and learning in a global pandemic. It goes without saying that we also recognize this will cause some parents to be inconvenienced. However, I do believe it's in the best interest of our school district. I've said from the beginning of this pandemic that we would prioritize relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. And I think this recommendation tonight comes from that viewpoint. Many school districts across the state and country have made very similar recommendations to reduce school day, to provide teachers more time. And I think we have to provide our teachers more time so they can better take care of their responsibilities and balance their own lives. If you go to the next slide, this is a, this represents our Continuous Learning Plan. You have copies of that at your seats tonight at the board table. It's been reviewed by the Indiana Department of Education, and should the board approve those changes that we just talked about, it's reflected in our Continuous Learning Plan, and these changes would go into effect on Monday, November 9th. And should you approve, once we finish our entire recommendation tonight, should you approve this, we will post this onto our website and put these changes into effect then on that Monday, November 9th. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Calderon to talk about other parts of the recommendation.
Good evening. President Curry, school board members, Superintendent Barker. The foundation of our reopening plan, and we've talked about this several times over the last four or five months, was our guiding principles. This evening, my focus will be on one of those principles as I talk about healthy buildings and what our daily, nightly custodial duties are and what their main focus is going to be. And this is all part of making our teachers feel comfortable when they walk in their classrooms every morning and teach in those classrooms, that that's where they do their work, and that's where they have the opportunity to make as big as impact on our students is in those classrooms. So when they walk in in the morning, we want them to feel at ease and feel that their classroom is a safe place to be with those students. But the focus will be centered around classroom and office services, okay? What our daily, nightly custodial tasks are, hallway services at that time, and restroom services. When we talk about classroom and office services, our expectation, Mr. Faulkner's expectations, our expectation is to disinfect all frequently touched surfaces, and that includes desks, sinks, doorknobs, light switches. All those things need to be taking place every night, and they understand that piece of it. And there's no exceptions to this. That is the expectation that we have for them. Obviously, empty the trash cans, wipe clean all frequently touched surfaces, clean the wipe boards using water, glass cleaner. I don't know if you can see that well. I don't want to read word for word from you, but we also expect them to vacuum the floors and clean the windows. Those two things may not happen on a day-in, day-out basis, okay? But in every other day, when those areas need to be vacuumed and windows need to be cleaned, we expect those to take place in all classrooms and office areas. Hallway services, again, the importance of disinfecting areas, water fountain areas where they can fill their water bottles up now, no exceptions, no exceptions at all. Emptying of all trash cans, touched surfaces, vacuum scrub, dry mop floors if needed and time allows, and clean windows. Again, just like the vacuuming floors and cleaning windows in office areas and classroom areas, the vacuum, the scrubbing, and the dry mopping may not occur on a nightly basis. And then restrooms, which are important. The disinfecting and wiping clean all touched surfaces with disinfectant. They'll use a number 40 spray twice daily, once at midday and once in the evening to make sure, and that has a three-minute time kill of all viruses. Again, empty trash cans, clean mirrors, clean toilets, and mop the restroom floors, okay? When time allows. Those are all little things. You think they're little, okay? But they can impact the culture of a school and the way teachers feel when they walk into the building every day. And just like all these areas, there's a, we're not perfect in any of them, but our goal is to get there. And so when our teachers walk into buildings each and every day, and they walk in their classrooms, they notice, okay? The cleanliness and those type of things. One thing we started here this week, just so our teachers, when they walk in their classrooms every day, there's a sticker that's put on the door on the outside as they enter from the hallway. And this sticker goes on the door and then on the door frame. So when they open that up, okay, it's right there. They know exactly what has been done the night before in their classroom, okay? And if there's any issues, then, you know, I'm sure I'll get to report on that, or Cory will get to report on that, and we'll make adjustments as needed. But I think this is a better way of doing business than what we're doing now because it allows our teachers to... it allows our teachers to see exactly at the given time as they walk in what's been done that night. I know PHM uses this, Penn Harris-Madison, and it's worked well in their school buildings. And our teaching staff, I mean, an important piece of disinfecting classrooms throughout today is our teaching staff, okay? And they've done a nice job of disinfecting student desk along with their students and other areas of their classrooms throughout the school day. Each classroom has sanitizing wipes for high-touch surfaces, which includes desk, and there's hand sanitizer available in every classroom for our teachers, staff, and students. So we feel good about that direction. I know there's been some concern about inventory, and there really shouldn't be any concern on that because there's inventory at every school, and we have tons of inventory out in the service building, so we're prepared, okay? We really feel good about the position we're in. One other thing I do want to mention is a little change with our breakfast. We had two schools start the beginning of the school year where kids took home their breakfast at the end of the day. So if you're leaving school on a Monday, you're going to get your breakfast handed to you as you walk out the building, okay? Some of our school buildings aren't big enough areas to keep people separated, socially distanced, and so Patel and LaSalle started the school year off by doing that, and it's worked really well, okay? Instead of using their classrooms to eat in, which causes other issues for teachers, cleanliness issues, they started out the school year doing that, and it's worked really well for them. One of the questions I asked them, one of the principals, was what happens when a student comes to school and they forgot to eat their breakfast at home, or they ate the breakfast the night before? The cafeteria has always been more than helpful in those situations of supplying something, but our numbers haven't been really big in terms of kids coming to school hungry, so that's been good so far. Beginning November 9, Beager and Emmons are going to try the same thing. They're going to go to that area, Twin Branch and Liberty. What school am I missing here?
Ums.
Ums. They feel comfortable using their cafeteria, I apologize. They feel comfortable using their cafeteria and feeding their kids that way moving forward. But it's been a good move for LaSalle and Patel, and I would expect Beager and Emmons to be no different. Just wanted to share those areas with you, talk about one of our guiding principles, focus in on healthy buildings tonight, and let you know we continue to look for ways to improve in all areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hickle?
Can you advance the slide, ma'am? Our third recommendation focuses on an additional teacher concern. Teachers voice concerns over pacing and their ability to provide grade-level instruction when so many of their students are experiencing learning gaps. You heard last meeting, Mrs. Foley spoke so eloquently to all of the increased responsibilities that teachers are facing, and oftentimes, that comes at the cost of instruction, and so they're feeling more and more pressure. Teachers work so hard to do everything and be everything to everyone that they often end up feeling like they aren't enough. Much attention toward learning loss is focused on remediation, but research and practice have shown that without question, remediation alone will never close this learning gap. We have to focus on moving our efforts to expanding remediation with acceleration, and that's precisely what we are working to do with our curriculum maps. We've adjusted the curriculum maps for K-6 and ELA to allow for time to both remediate learning gaps while also teaching grade-level instruction to accelerate our students. We'll continue this work by collaboratively adjusting the K-8 math curriculum maps based on analysis of data and student progress while keeping in mind the importance of grade-level instruction. It is our hope that this work helps teachers to balance what feels like an impossible load and gives them the confidence that their hard work will be seen through the payoff of their students' progress. Next slide, please. In addition to that, for grades seven to 12, now more than ever, teachers are feeling hypercritical about how they spend their time, instructional time, with students, especially with the hybrid. Almost all of our students are expected to and were expected to enter this fall nearly a grade level behind their previous progress, and educators were overwhelmed covering these unprecedented amounts of instructional content with less time rather than more time. Curriculum prioritization becomes essential to help close that gap. We are using this curriculum prioritization tool to aid our teachers and our administrators in making instructional decisions and planning to provide better instruction and to help to minimize that feeling of being overloaded. So what this tool allows you to do is it provides standardized sets of questions to identify high-value content in their existing curriculum. We are able to adjust the maps in K-6, but for educators in seven to 12, they have multiple curriculum maps across content areas. So rather than remapping, curriculum mapping takes a lot of work, this tool allows us to keep our maps but to really focus on those areas that are high-yield. So again, the intention of this work is to help support the teachers in balancing that feeling that they have to do everything on top of the fact that they feel like they have less time with their students in person for instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hickle. Mr. Labonne.
Thank you. We're going to take just a moment here to update the board on the current state of COVID-19 in St. Joseph County, looking specifically at the Indiana State Department of Health metrics. And again, there are two of those, the seven-day positivity rate and the weekly cases per 100,000 residents. Together, these two metrics form a weekly county status score ranging from zero to three. The county status for St. Joe County reflects a 2.0 yet again for another week, which places us in the orange zone. As such, the School City of Mishawaka student learning options, they continue to align with the recommendations under this zone, specifically when the county is experiencing moderate or high community spread of the virus. Next slide, please. Looking at the metrics that are specific to the St. Joseph County Department of Health, the county continues to reflect two metrics that are in the red and two metrics that are in the yellow. As Mr. Barker spoke to at the last school board meeting, you know, we remain vigilant that the numbers, specifically the new cases per day and the percent positivity rate across the county and across the state and honestly, the country, continue to climb. I'll reinforce our belief that our aggressive yet proactive approach towards safely reopening our schools continues to serve the staff and the teachers and our students well. And as Mr. Calderoni just addressed moments ago, you know, we continue to refine our practice, to better it, to better serve those that we are intended to serve, and we see that most recently evidenced in those cleaned and sealed stickers. Are those necessary? Absolutely not. But if that little sticker that's placed on the door of a teacher's classroom on a nightly basis that can be checked off to say, "I did this, your room is clean, your room is safe," is enough to make them feel a little bit more comfortable, given the circumstances, that is certainly an easy concession, R and R, and one that we're more than happy to do. Next slide, please. All that being said, School City of Mishawaka is certainly not immune to the reality that most school districts across the state and nearly every single community have experience in terms of having both positive cases and students in quarantine. As a result, we have been working really diligently with our partners from R and R Benefits, Onsite Health, and St. Joseph Health System to begin offering in-house testing for COVID-19 for specific and eligible School City of Mishawaka employees. We have obviously consulted with Dr. Fox from the St. Joe County Department of Health as well for his guidance and our planning purposes as well. There are obviously a lot of logistics involved associated with this type of initiative, and we have many details that we're still trying to finalize as we stand here tonight. But in thinking about ways in which we can continue to support the whole employee and offer, you know, further reduce the workload and the stress of our staff, having the ability to offer in-house testing offers really three primary benefits. Firstly, it allows eligible employees to safely return to their classroom or to their work responsibilities as quickly as possible, but and obviously in a manner in which that still aligns with the return to work or return to school guidelines that have been provided by the Indiana State Department of Health. A lot of instances right now, we have employees who are out for multiple days simply waiting for a test result. They've chosen to get tested for one reason or the other, and it takes sometimes upwards of five to seven days to get those results back. If we can expedite that timeline in a safe and responsible manner, which would allow our employees to be back to their duties or again to their classrooms, that again, still align with all of the guidelines by state and local health officials, again, that's a win for us. Secondly, it creates the opportunity for our cost savings for the district when we look at the expenses associated with sub-coverage for our classroom teachers in addition to the costs billed to the school district for the actual test itself. And then finally, subsequently reduces the pressure on our building principals and on school secretaries in finding sub-coverage and for teachers who are asked to either forego a special or to give up or buy out a prep time to cover another classroom. And obviously, all of this increases the quality of the instruction being offered to our students when we have a highly qualified, highly effective educator in their classroom, one that they're they're well familiar with and that they've grown to know and to love, whether over a computer screen or face-to-face. We've obviously referenced Leader and me a few times now at our board meetings, but I know that if Stephen Covey were here, he would say that this is a win. A win and a win. So we are pleased to be able to do this for our staff, offer the service. We'll continue to keep the board informed on our progress pending our approval and obviously any unanticipated variables. We intend to begin offering the service to all of our employees as quickly as possible. Next slide. I'll talk on to you. Before I turn it back over to Mr. Barker, you know, we've heard the phrase pandemic fatigue referenced more and more often in the news. It's becoming a reality for many people right now. However, you know, now is not the time to become complacent. Rather, we need to double down, and we still need to do better yet as we near the peak of the season, obviously, sometime in December through February. As the weather begins to change and people start to move indoors, wearing a mask, social distancing, practicing good and frequent hand hygiene, washing, sanitizing, et cetera, that's going to become even more important to us. We want to continue to have our schools and our communities open and clear in a safe and responsible manner. So with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Barker for the recommendation.
So you've heard a lot of information tonight. I'll make the recommendation, and then obviously, we'll answer any questions or have discussion. But it's recommended by the administration that the Board of School Trustees approve the roadmap to reopening plan update number eight as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve. Is there any are there any questions, or is there any discussion or comment from the board?
I would like to say two things. So I appreciate Amy, and I appreciate the MEA, and I appreciate the administration and the staff for coming together and listening to the needs and the desires and the wants of just functioning in the school corporation. But there's also another group of people that are really worried about the reduced amount of education going to our students, and it really more impacts the elementary level students, right? The high school and the junior high or an advisory or in some kind of study hall towards the end of the day is really not going to impact them at all. But it is going to impact the elementary. And for the teachers that are concerned about the reduction in education hour, I want you to know that as a board member and as the five of us sit here and the superintendent, our intent is to make this as temporary as possible until we come up with a better plan. Never taking kids out of a classroom is ever going to be beneficial, especially kids who are learning in this level of crazy right now. So the teachers that have emailed, the teachers that have called, the teachers that have concerns, this is a temporary fix. This is a Band-Aid to give you some breathing room to do some refueling of yourselves so that you continue to give everything you do, because we know teachers. So we are going to work on this, and if it's hiring more support staff, if it is finding more teachers, if it is whatever it is, and if we, as a group, are all going to do the work to put those people in place. They are out there, we will find them, and we will accommodate for the situation that we are in now. So this is a very temporary plan because nobody wants to reduce hours of education. So I am grateful that we came to this so quickly. I'm glad that we have a light, but it's not bright enough, and we will do better, and we will keep working at it. That's all I can say.
I'd like to say a couple things as well. You know, as Holly just said, you know, our teachers need time to recharge, and I'd like to make an example out of Mrs. Foley. So out of the five of us that sit on this board, I've had the pleasure of sitting in Mrs. Foley's calculus class. Mrs. Foley came to class every day with a cup full of energy, and she poured that energy in all of our little minds, and she brought such enthusiasm, such charisma, such intelligence, patience, beauty to the art of education to the classroom every day. I still know how to do a derivative. I just want you to know that, Mrs. Foley, I still know. I learned more in Mrs. Foley's calculus class than I did in my two calculus classes I took at Ball State University. Not any discredit to my professors, but that just goes to show what type of teacher Mrs. Foley is. And I'm confident that most, if not all, of our teachers are just as competent, amazing, enthusiastic, charismatic, all the positive words, as Mrs. Foley. To think what our teachers are going through right now, especially at that secondary level, trying to teach a virtual classroom, an in-person classroom, maintain their sanity, be there for their students, sanitize their classroom, et cetera, mind-boggling. So this is our temporary fix. We'll continue to search for solutions, but we need to refill Mrs. Foley's cup. We need to fill all of our teachers' cups so that they can continue to give to their students. Because if our teachers have that energy and that everything they need, they'll give it back to our students. They'll absolutely do that because that's why they became teachers. That's why they do what they do. So thank you, Mrs. Foley. Thank you to all of our teachers, all of our administrators, all of our staff, all the people we're going to hire to help you. We appreciate your efforts and your collaboration and your continued collaboration to work with us. We are all committed to getting through this together. We will survive. We'll get there.
I would like to say that it's going to be tough to follow you two. I mean, both of you did such a great job. The only point that I want to make, and I agree wholeheartedly with what you both have talked about, the point that I want to make is that this is just a solution for now and that we're going to continue to search for a better solution, and we're not going to quit. So let's get this thing passed and get back to work.
I just want to say that the board has the teachers and administrations here, and we are as much involved as we can be to solve these problems. Many of these fixes are Band-Aid fixes, they're not permanent fixes. We understand that, and I think I speak for the board when I say we realize many times we're asking you to do an impossible job possible, and we understand that, and thank you for your efforts.
Well, you haven't left much for me to say. I agree with everything the other board members have said last week in order to get a better perspective on just the, you know, what are the actual challenges that are being faced by the teachers and the students in the classroom due to the pandemic, you know, the cleaning, the distancing and all. I spent an entire day with a teacher over at Ums', and when I went into the classroom at the beginning of the day, I thought I had some idea of what I was going to, you know, find and what they were going through. But by the end of the day, I realized at the beginning of the day, I had no idea of what they were, what the challenges were in going through. Teachers, and it wasn't just the Teachers, and it wasn't just this one teacher that I shadowed, it was all the teachers I spoke with while I was there, they're exhausted, and they're running on empty. And because of the added duties, I mean, it's an exhausting day under the best of times, but when you have to constantly pay attention to who's in contact with who, be able to document that if necessary, sanitize everything in between contacts, they don't have any time. And every one of them said that the one thing that they needed in order to effectively, you know, work with their students, and not just collapse from exhaustion was more time. So that's the purpose of this. And as we've all said, it's a temporary fix. We're looking, this is an ongoing challenge that changes, you know, on a daily or weekly basis, and the solutions that we come up with to meet the challenges are also going to be changing, you know, addressing the situations as they change. So this is a temporary thing. I know that there are teachers out there who are concerned about, well, with the loss of instructional time, how are we going to be doing in terms of the state's, the state of Indiana is still going to be testing, and what's the impact on that? And, you know, as our Superintendent Barker has said, we need to approach things with grace, and it's our plan to treat this year as establishing a baseline for progress moving forward, so the teachers don't need to feel that loss, you know, that, because there are, as Mr. Strawn pointed out in his remarks, there are instructional losses this year, and it's not due to any lack of effort on the part of the instructional staff, it's due to the pandemic and the challenges that we faced here. And we understand that, and we're going to take, we'll of course, take that into consideration moving forward in connection with the evaluation process, you know, of the district and the teachers. So I regret that we're at a point where we have to, you know, make all of these changes, but we have a very good team in place and that takes everybody's consideration into consideration. I'm very pleased this is a joint recommendation from the MEA and the administration, and it's something I believe we should support. The motion to approve the reopening plan update number eight has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for your work. Thank you all, the people in the classrooms, for everything you do, and we're here to support you. Takes us on to report and discussion items. Item 6.01, the September financial statements and monthly comparison. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, and members of the Board. As always, I'm just going to briefly kind of go through the financials, and feel free to stop me at any time. There we go. So starting with the education fund, again, as we've sort of saw most of the year, salaries and benefits. Salaries shot a little bit ahead in September when compared to where we had been as a percentage the last few months, but again, right in line with where we actually budgeted on the start of the year. Same with benefits. Overall revenue is right in line with where it was projected. However, I will point out, when we get to November, December, the state will correct our tuition support to reflect our drop in ADM. So again, our monthly distribution for state tuition support will come down in November and December to reflect really a reduction that should have occurred July through December. That being said, overall expenditures under where we budgeted, I would still say that we've saved on supplies over calendar year 2020, saved on some utilities, a number of other things. And again, month of September, typically, we add to our balance in the month of September, and we certainly did this year, up to just under $5.1 million. Again, just a reminder, we are withholding Social Security payments from the IRS. We'll repay 50% of those in December of 2020, and the other 50% in December of 2021. So really, this cash balance is sort of inflated by about $300,000 right now, because we're essentially just holding that money, and we'll repay it later on. But overall, the education fund for 2020 looks good. Referendum operating fund, same story. Salaries, a little bit ahead of where I had budgeted them due to the additional hours for tech assistance over the summer, but benefits are pretty close to in line, as are the other categories. Again, seeing that we'll make a large transfer of $400,000 at year-end into the rainy day. Again, this fund, right in line with where we would expect it to be. I'm not going to talk much about debt service. Again, we make monthly payments on our common school fund loans. However, everything else is paid in June and December, and there is no revenue other than June and December, so. And then same thing with the capital debt service. The operating, or the operations fund, again, salaries and benefits, pretty close to where we had budgeted them. Revenue, again, it's coming up short, because the budget order assumes that we're going to collect 100% of local property taxes, but we will not due to the circuit breaker. However, because of the waiver, we collected more than we otherwise would have. So the cash balance in the operations fund at the end of September, just over $2.8 million. And again, we will finish the year 2020 with the operations fund looking pretty good, the real concern being 2021 and moving forward. School lunch fund, again, September is usually a bad month for the school lunch fund, the reason being that you're experiencing your expenditures in real time, so these are really the expenditures you'd experience, that we experienced in September for the most part, minus the lag in pay periods and pay dates. However, your revenue is really your August revenue. So we only brought in $30,952, because again, we didn't do the summer feeding, we end summer feeding on July 31st, and so what you're seeing there is just any revenue that we might have picked up either at the tail end of July or at the very end of August. So again, in the month of September for food service, your expenditures typically greatly outweigh your revenue. And so we did see a reduction in our cash balance to $627,000. However, September 30th of 2019, the cash balance was $486,000. So we're still moving in the right direction despite everything that's going on, just not quite to the extent that we might have seen had we had a normal end of last year and start to this year. Curricular materials fund, textbook fees are starting to be collected. We saw a collection of $20,722 in the month of September, and then we did make quite a few purchases, whether that be textbook, workbooks, et cetera, pretty typical for the start of the school year, purchasing materials. So we did see a decrease of $80,000 in our curricular materials fund, I always forget that. However, we still have $388,000 in that fund, well ahead of where we were 12 months ago. And so again, positive things for our curricular materials fund. Our self-insurance fund, again, claims in the month of September were a little bit higher than we would have liked to have seen, higher than the amount of money coming in for health insurance, and so we did see a decrease in our cash balance of $55,000. Again, however, we still have a positive cash balance of $216,000. So we're continuing to keep that fund in the black, however, not seeing cash balances where we want, where we would really like to see them. But again, better than being in the black, that's for sure. So that's it for the monthly statements. The comparison report, again, is really just combining the education and operations funds, and then it goes back and compares it previously to what was the general fund, capital projects fund, transportation, bus replacement, et cetera. And so September of 2020, the combined cash balance between those two funds, just under $7.9 million. Again, slightly overstated because of the Social Security payments we're withholding, but again, moving those cash balances in a positive direction, and sort of following that trend that we've been following for a while now. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have, but those are the financials for September of 2020.
Are there any questions for Mr. Newman? Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you.
Item 7.01, personnel report. Mr. Calderon.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. It is recommended that the personnel report dated October 28, 2020 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, approved, the personnel report as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Calderon. 8.01, learning by design update. Ms. Hickel and Ms. Stox though.
Give me a moment while I disinfect the locker. It was cleaned. You cleaned it? It has been a while since we last updated you on the progress of learning by design. Too often these days, our minds are focused on COVID-19 and the impact of a global pandemic, and understandably so. Tonight, we would like to share progress on the work of learning by design, and explain how the components of learning by design continue to guide our work and serve us well even during these challenging times. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we all share in the concerns for our children. It is on all our minds, whether you are a teacher in the classroom, a board member, parent, family, or community member. Many of us have probably felt or seen firsthand worry, fear, anxiety, and stress, knowing our world has changed, and wondering how all of this is impacting kids. I know, as a mother of a new kindergartner, I lose sleep wondering, did I do enough to prepare him this year? Is he finding success because he missed so much of his pre-... As a mother of a freshman at Michawaca High School, who was new to the school, worries about her son's ability to meet new people, and build friendships that we all know are so important during the high school experience. While much of our impact, we spend just as much time worrying too about the long-term impact of COVID-19 for our Michawaca students. It is too soon to know all the lasting effects, but research and predictives are already indicating the negative effects will be far-reaching and long-lasting, not only on academics, but also the overall well-being of our students. School closures caused by COVID-19 have additional aspects of trauma to students. Loss of resources and loss of opportunity to learn that go well beyond a traditional summer break for many families. In other words, children from more affluent communities are more likely to come from families with financial resources, stable employment, and flexible work from home and childcare arrangements that allow them to weather this storm more easily than families who are renting their housing, working in low-pay fields that are hardest hit by the economic impacts, and experiencing higher rates of food insecurity, family instability, and other shocks from this disruption. Nevertheless, preliminary forecasts that we will show you parallel many educational leaders' fears. Missing school for a prolonged period will have major impacts on student achievement for this school year and beyond. The COVID-19 crisis is a call to action for practitioners and policymakers alike. To provide preliminary estimates of the potential impacts of the extended pause of academic instruction in person during the COVID-19 crisis, NWA, known as Northwestern Education Association, a national non-for-profit assessment organization, leveraged research on summer loss and used a national sample of over 5 million students in grades three through eight to project the forecasted impact of COVID-19. In a typical year, shown as a solid line, average academic growth varies across academic year, shown as a curved line seen in some grades, and generally declines from the last day of school through the summer. So on the graph, you'll see third grade in red, all the way moving up to eighth grade in pink. On the axis, at the bottom, you'll see September, your first day of school, to your typical last day of school, right here in the June-July, and you will see a decline from their last day of school to starting school again in September 1st, and that is typical. NWA examined how the observed typical average growth trajectory by grades, by grade for students who completed a standard-length school year compared to projections under two scenarios for the closures. A COVID-19 slide, in which students showed patterns of academic setbacks typical of summer throughout an extended closure, and a COVID-19 slowdown, in which students maintained the same level of academic achievement they had when schools were closed, modeled for simplicity as March 15th, with schools resuming in the fall. The COVID slowdown is shown with the dashed lines, and that would start from that school closure to returning to school in the fall, and this is basically shows that students are maintaining the same achievement during the time of reduced ability to educate remotely. More learning loss occurs if a COVID slide happened, and that's using data to show if we ended closed schools, March 15th or in that area, and the fall in September 1st, and it was like a summer break, the student was not able to participate in remote instruction, and didn't have the same opportunities at home, there was more significant learning loss. The forecast shows that if a COVID-19 slide occurred for a student, the student returned to school in fall 2020 with roughly 70% of the learning gains in reading relative to a typical school year. The following is a forecast for mathematics, using the same metrics and systems that you saw for reading, with the same line representing the typical growth and summer loss that we see at all grade levels, grades three through eight, but this forecast shows students are likely to show much smaller learning gains, returning with less than 50% of the learning gains in some grades, nearly a full year behind what we would observe in normal conditions for mathematics. Now shifting to, from national forecasts to our actual local data that we are seeing this school year, the following graph represents our diagnostic assessment, similar to NWA, comparing our fall 2019, pre-COVID-19 pandemic, and our fall 2020 this year, post-COVID, I mean, during the COVID pandemic, for K-8 students in mathematics. The red represents students that are two or more grade levels below, yellow represents students that are one grade level below, and green represents students that are in grade level, are where they should be at that typical developmental time for the student. You will see that there's a 6% increase in students who are two or more grade levels below for us this year compared to fall 2019. Although this is not significant, it is still concerning. And we want to highlight that one reason why our learning loss in math is not as significant as the national forecast is because of the good work of our teachers and students during the fall 2019-20 school year, prior to the closure for COVID-19. Last year, grounded in the components of learning by design, we focused with our teachers and our students on math instructional practices at the elementary level, specifically using math practices aligned with our core curriculum-ready math. This bar graph shows our fall 2019 scores compared to our winter 2020 scores, and the significant increase that we saw. The I-Ready assessment represents a predictive measure to I-Learn, showing that we would have seen significant growth had we had the opportunity to take I-Learn last year, which we did not. We will continue to use the I-Ready assessment as a diagnostic tool to determine our students' current level of performance, and as a tool to identify and address learning gaps from unfinished learning. In short, for the majority of our students... In short, for the majority of our students, we experienced the COVID slowdown, not the COVID slide. This did not happen by chance, our luck, it happened by intentional hard work of our teachers grounded in the components of learning by design.
We first brought you the ambitious plan of learning by design over two years ago, and we proudly celebrated the successes we were seeing from that work last year with you. And as Katie just shared, the mid-year and predictive data was showing our largest improvement growth in over a decade. The good news doesn't end there, though. The hard work and intentionality of learning by design continues to be our roadmap and is still the frame- ... in these challenging times. Just as the predictive data Katie shared and the research began focusing on learning loss this past spring, research quickly turned to how to combat this learning loss in the summer. Through our work with the Research Consortium of EAB, we identified three research-supported strategies that could guide our work to combat learning loss due to COVID-19. Perfectly aligned with the work we had already been doing in learning by design. So you can see those three strategies up there, the prioritization of curriculum, the streamlining of instruction, and the expansion of remediation to acceleration. Time now more than ever is a precious commodity, and work of a curricular prioritization and streamlined instruction are absolutely essential. We are focused on moving our efforts to expanding remediation, including acceleration. This can be a hard concept to understand. Teachers are doing everything they can to meet their students' needs, and we hear often the desire to remediate the gaps before moving on to new content. It seems logical. But if we live entirely in the land of remediation, never exposing students to grade-level content, we will never minimize the performance gap that we are seeing. It is truly a delicate balancing act between remediation and grade-level content that achieves this desired acceleration can help us in closing that achievement gap. Ultimately, that is what the chart on the far right is showing you, showing you remediation alone. You can see that in a year's time, you will be able to remediate a year's gap, but students will continue to be behind. If we take that approach, our students will never catch up. And then if you compare that to the idea of a student who is naturally on grade level, you can see that their performance grows annually by a year. With this accelerated approach, this is our best opportunity to close that gap, and that's precisely what we will do with our students. As referenced in the reopening update that you heard earlier tonight, the tool we're utilizing with our PLCs will guide teachers in identifying and prioritizing the most essential content, skills, and standards. In addition to that, how we spend our instructional time is more important now than ever. We need to make every minute count. This provides a great opportunity for us to closely examine our own practices and strategically declutter, taking away practices that are not high-impact and have proven to be low-value. This work is not easily done, but rather it takes a great deal of reflection, collaboration, and planning. Many of our teachers have naturally started to streamline their instruction, but through the PLC process, we can support this work for all teachers, gaining back much-needed instructional time in the classroom. And finally, that third strategy, which falls under continuous improvement and learning by design, and this is our focus on multi-tiered systems of support. Through multi-tiered systems of support in math and literacy at grades K through 8, our most targeted and efficient way to accelerate learning and address learning loss due to COVID-19. The graphics you're probably familiar with, we've shared with them before, but these graphics are the way to target the graphs that Katie was showing you in our anticipated learning loss. Those concerns also pertain to our secondary students. As we continue to improve the MTSS process at both John Young and Mishawaka High School, we are seeing concerning patterns in regards to achievement for our older students during COVID-19. While many of our students are staying on track and finding success, we are also seeing more and more student, students fall into a high-risk category. We continue to see concerns over student engagement, grades, earning credits, and ultimately learning. Both Mishawaka High School and John Young Middle School have built into their secondary schedule dedicated time to address the need for remediation as well as additional supports for students. But there will continue to be needs for more targeted and aggressive steps to combat this. We will share more of these plans at the next board meeting when we discuss our second semester learning plan. Ultimately, the topic of accountability and state assessments is weighing on many of our teachers' minds, and we saw that in the concerns that they voiced. We know as of now, the Indiana Department of Education is still anticipating using I-Learn as the metric for measuring our schools. In addition to that, there are metrics in place beyond just math and English performance for the high school. We know that in the past year, 10 years, sorry, Mishawaka graduation rate has been able to stay above the 90%. Graduation rates count for 60% of our accountability for the high school metric. The Mishawaka school letter grade has been able to stay at an A or a B because of maintaining that 90% graduation rate. But the combination of the IDOE changes in the calculator process combined with the learning loss due to COVID-19 will make it ever increasingly difficult to reach that 90% graduation rate for both the class of 2021 and a lesser degree of the class of 2022. These measures that we are taking to explore the reduced learning loss can substantially improve our ability for our at-risk seniors to graduate, and we are committed to supporting them in doing so. Mr. Curry already spoke to this briefly, but it's important to understand, as we listen to our teachers and what weighs heavy on their minds and their hearts, assessment comes up quite a bit. And it's important to understand that assessment is not the enemy, but rather our focus on the purpose of assessment rather than the type is a lens for student learning, meaning we have to use that data to guide the adjustment of our curriculum mapping and our pacing to make sure that we're meeting students where they're at, and we're doing everything that we possibly can to support the mitigation of that learning loss. We'll maintain the SCM assessment calendar with increased flexibility and data to input into the adjustments. Ultimately, we will participate in state and national assessments, but that importance that Mr. Curry spoke to, that this year is a baseline year, it is not a metric to evaluate the work of our teachers this year, but rather a reset button to let us know where we're at and where we will continue to grow from. So hopefully, that has given you a little bit of a lens into the work of learning by design, how it fits into the work of mitigating learning loss due to COVID-19, and ultimately the great work that is happening in our classrooms every day.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a couple of things. I guess I'm not surprised at the loss. I'm not surprised in two facets. If you're a parent with students at School City of Mishawaka Schools and they struggle or you are aware of the struggle for some students at Mishawaka Schools, the gap of learning is great for some, and the lack of closing that gap over, and I'll just use general terms, I've been inside of School City now with students for 23 years. So for 23 years, you've been able to see the gap between students and the learning loss, and how they've been able to proceed and move on and grow and graduate Mishawaka, keeping the graduation rate at a 90%, but yet not having the basic knowledge or capabilities of being in the workforce or going to college, right? So we pass them through to keep our graduation rates up, but really not closing the gap enough to make them truly educated. But in the same token, part of the problem is, is the movement of learning is so great and so fast, and they are demanded to learn so much so quickly that it's almost impossible that if you have a learning disability, that you could even keep up with that, right? So closing that gap is not realistic. Can we narrow it? Maybe, but closing it is never going to happen, in my eyes, and just in my 20-some years of being a parent in this corporation. The other thing is, is that the COVID fatigue that Corey talked about, we're all tired, right? We're all done. Nobody wants to hear about it anymore. But what COVID has done now, it has affected the future of who these students are. So if they were already behind, and now COVID, let's say it just lasts until next March and somehow miraculously falls off the face of the earth, we don't hear about it again, right? Fingers crossed. So, but our kids are already going to reduce instruction time with the level of the gap on top of COVID fatigue and all of the nonsense going on in the world. So I don't know, and I appreciate, I truly appreciate your positivity. There is nobody in this school corporation, Sarah, that I literally hear as a cheerleader that you promote all the positivity and really want to pull out all the great benefits of what is working. But I understand that we're in a situation where it is, the positives kind of help keep your head from going under the water, but in the same token, in a year of this mess, in a year where our students are getting less than they deserve, and our teachers are working more than they've ever worked in their entire careers to make sure, I just don't know how it's realistic to even discuss or try to close gaps or bring people up until we can honestly say we can come back to school and we can put the efforts in. I think it's a lot to ask, but I appreciate that we're doing it and that we're trying to do it through this pandemic, but it just seems overwhelming. And for our students who aren't getting their full instruction, I don't even know how it's possible to get them to close those gaps. So I appreciate all the work that you do, and I appreciate your positivity in this and giving us all this good information, but this literally overwhelms me. And I'm a grown adult in the workforce for a long time, and it's just, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming to be a teacher and have this rigor to figure out how we're going to close that, I just, I can't even imagine. I can't even imagine.
Holly's made her statement, I'm going to ask a question. Teacher X, according to David, has made a statement that you're aware of, and listening, and I totally agree with Holly, where are we at realistically? That's my question.
So the experience of Teacher X and what Holly's talking about is exactly what we're seeing, and I guess rather than positivity, I see it as fortitude. We know we were doing the right work last year, we saw the gains from it, and we know that that same right work that is happening daily in our classrooms with our teachers is what will help mitigate that loss. We cannot possibly throw up our hands and say, this is our lot in life and it's terrible and we're going to accept it, because that will impact the future of our students. So knowing that we're seeing the greatest losses that we've, you know, ever faced, at least in my time as an educator, it's this work and the maximizing what we can do and what we can control that'll be the only thing that sees us through. So it's not Pollyanna that, you know, we're going to turn this around and everyone's going to be achieving precisely where they're at, but it's that we're not going to let that gap continue to widen because we think we can't control it. We can.
So based on everything that's happened tonight and based on what I've heard, I mean, we've got a short-term solution to help the situation, but it's not the long-term fix, because it's going, the gap's going to continue to get worse. So we've got to move forward and come up with a better solution than what we've come up with, as quickly as we can.
I completely agree.
Okay.
And to go with what Bill's saying and what Holly is saying, what I've learned from COVID is intentionality, right? And I think that's what you're speaking to tonight.
Precisely.
Is that we're reducing the elementary day by 45 minutes, so we need to make sure in the remaining time that we make every minute count. And not just, not just now during the reduced time, but going forward, right? But with that, with that intentionality of those minutes, I think it's also imperative during this time to make sure that it's a highly collaborative effort, making sure that our teachers are on board, that they feel supported, and not just feel supported by you, Sarah, but feel supported by all of us, because this is no longer a situation where, you know, it's, it's every man for himself, we're all in this together. And it needs to be intentional, it needs to be supportive, we need to have some grace, and there has to be a long-term solution. We have to close the gap, we don't have a choice.
No. And because if we don't, that graduation rate will go back to what it was years ago when we weren't graduating students that were successful because they were quitting or they were doing other things or whatever, and we have made a lot of progress. And with that progress, have we, everyone that's walked out those doors with a diploma, have they truly earned it? Who knows? But they have it nevertheless, so the graduation rate has stayed where it is. So with this intentionality, the intentionality is that when they all graduate high school, they have literally earned that diploma, and they have gone out with something and gained something for success for their teachers. And with gaps like that, there are going to be a wide range of students that are going to walk out of the doors with a diploma and not have the full education because we didn't. And so I want to close the gap, believe me, it needs to be closed. We need to have kids learning at the same rate and level in their grades, and I'm, whatever it takes to get there, I support. And this is one of those tools that you're using to get there. So it is no, it's no, it is a work in progress always. And I want to see the gap closed, and I want to see something happen. In the pandemic is what I'm saying, it is extremely complicated because we're all done. We're just working and working and working and working, and our kids are struggling more so now because they don't have a teacher in their face, you know? And special services and resources and things that they do when they're in school. So, thank you.
As the superintendent who inherited School City of Mishawaka, learning by design, and I say that trying not to take any credit for it because I don't deserve any, it's work that had been in place, and it's unfortunate that we have a global pandemic for many, many, many reasons, obviously. One of those is that we didn't get to realize the reward of learning by design last spring and what would have been increased student achievement scores, quite possibly unlike anything we had seen in a long time. So the same work that closed that gap over the previous few years is the same work that we have to do now to continue to close that gap going forward, because all the research shows us, I mean, we can, you saw data tonight from students who experienced Hurricane Katrina and how far that put them back, and this is very similar, except now it's across the country. We can't typically have a presentation ready for Mr. Strawn's questions as we somewhat did tonight. You know, I've talked to superintendents in Marion County, and one specifically said we're seeing lots of As and lots of Fs, and I think we're seeing similar concerning data out of our own students right here, and you're seeing it in rural communities, you're seeing it everywhere. And this is the same work, though, that will close that gap as we were getting ready to see last spring had we been able to have those tests. And that's unfortunate. I'm not a proponent of putting a lot of stock in the standardized tests. I think Sarah talked to that better tonight in terms of the purpose behind learning instead of it being about a score, but I think we would have seen that, and I think that'll be the same thing that we'll see as we go forward and we narrow that gap from what it would have been had we not had intentionality and, to use your word, and what learning by design will look like as we go forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you for your work. We're now in the Business and Operations section of the agenda, item 9.01, Recommendation to Ratify Agreement with the Mishawaka Education Association for the 2020-2021 School Year. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Consistent with the requirements of Indiana law, School City of Mishawaka engaged in negotiations with the MEA on a new agreement for the 2020-2021 school year. The parties reached a tentative agreement on all required salary, benefit, and related issues on September 29th. The school corporation held a public meeting to discuss the tentative agreement on October 14th. The tentative agreement is attached to this agenda item and is also posted on the school corporation's website. It includes a 5% increase in health insurance premiums, a base salary increase of $800 to $40,000, which becomes the new starting teacher rate. Teachers with a current base between $40,000 and $51,101 will receive a $1,400 base increase, and current teachers with a salary in excess of $51,102- And current teachers with a salary in excess of $51,102 will receive a $1,000 base increase. Mr. Curry, I'm going to turn it back over to you as we must take public comment on the tentative agreement prior to voting on its ratification.
All right. Now, this is pursuant to state law, so we'll call in, is there any public comment on the proposal and the recommendation? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of it or in opposition to it? All right, then we'll close the public comment section and move on to the consideration of the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the ratification of the 2020-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement?
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the agreement. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9.02, Recommendation to Approve the 2021 Capital Projects Plan. Again, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Per Indiana Code, notice to taxpayers on the proposed 2021 Capital Projects Plan was published to the Indiana Gateway Website and on the school corporation's website. On October 14th, we held the public hearing and the final step in the process is the formal adoption of the 2021 Capital Projects Plan via the resolution by the Board of School Trustees.
So is there a motion to approve the 2021 Capital Project Plan as presented?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Takes us to 9.03, Recommendation to Approve the 2021 Bus Replacement Plan. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Per Indiana Code, notice to taxpayers on the proposed 2021 Bus Replacement Plan was published to the Indiana Gateway Website and our school corporation website. On October 14th, we held the public hearing and for approval this evening is the resolution or the final step in the budget, in the budget process by the Board of School Trustees.
For approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation for the bus replacement plan. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9.04, Transition of the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum to the History Museum. Ms. Fai.
As she's coming up, I'll just make a couple opening comments. The Hannah Lindell Children's Museum located inside School City of Mishawaka Admin Center has been closed for more than two years. In January of 2019, Museum Advisory Board members began working with consultant Ms. Fai to determine the future of the 74-year-old museum and its collection. Ms. Fai is here tonight. She will discuss the opportunity and process for transitioning the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum Collection over to the History Museum. Following her presentation, the Board of School Trustees will be asked to approve a resolution that will allow the Children's Museum Advisory Board and Jan Fai and the School City of Mishawaka Administration, along with Lisa Gartee, who's also here tonight, to work toward the transfer of the collection. The administration would like to thank Jan Fai, Lisa Gartee, and the Advisory Board and all of the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum stakeholders for their longstanding positive relationship with School City of Mishawaka. The school corporation is very thankful for the many years of collaboration and is excited to see the collection being put in such great hands that our community can continue to enjoy the collection for years to come. So, thank you, Ms. Fai.
Thank you, President Curry, Superintendent Barker, and members of the board. I'm delighted to be able to give you an update this evening. I think you will be pleased with what you hear. You remember that we came before the board, I think in September, to ask for approval to examine and explore some options for the transfer of the Children's Museum Collection to the History Museum. We put together a group, a transition team, made up of Lisa Gartee, Brian Harding, Kristi Erickson, Kristi Dunn, Marilyn Thompson, and myself, to start to explore the ways that those would, that transfer would be accomplished. I'd like to share the highlights of the plan that I believe you've already received prior to tonight's meeting and give you those highlights of what we've put together. Although the plan seems fairly simple, make no mistake, the process is intense. There is a lot to be done to accomplish our goal of transferring the collection by June 30th of 2021. As of today, there are 246 days left to do this. I'm counting. The transition team is, as I said, made up of the individuals I told you. They are the individuals that are overseeing this process. We are meeting on a regular basis and really getting down to the nuts and bolts of how is this going to work. One of the things that we think is very important as we move forward, a transition is not just how do we transfer items, it's for years going forward. It isn't as though we're going to, as of July 1st, walk into the History Museum and see everything that we're used to seeing in the Children's Museum here. It will take time. That transition is part of what we're discussing as well. And we think it's very, very important for the people who have grown up with the museum, the Children's Museum, who love the museum, the volunteers that we have seen, to join us in that transition process by joining committees. There will be a new committee formed that will be called, at least at this point, the Children's Museum Advisory Committee. That is not a committee that has been, has been formed prior to this time, but will be to really think about how this is going to work once the collection arrives, excuse me, my throat is very dry, once the transfer of the collection takes place. When you do a transfer of this type, you have to look at the finances and how does all of that work? And there are two funds that we are looking to draw from. One, we call them the museum-generated funds. And out of that fund, the expenses for this transfer will be drawn. Expenses like legal fees, moving, packing, temporary storage may be necessary, and I'll talk to that in a minute. All of those will be drawn from those funds and they will be done through mutual agreement between Lisa Gartee and Alex Newman. So we're taking the use of these funds very, very seriously. There is also an endowment, and I know that you are aware of that. The endowment will be transferred upon, the collection transfer will be transferred to Northern Indiana Historical Society in keeping with the stipulations of the endowment to begin with, that it be used for children's, a children's museum slash education. So that will happen at some time in the future. As we look at the marketing for all of this, we're very excited. You know, I think it's easy to think that once we transfer the collection, that it will be done. There is a relationship that is very important here that has to continue and we're looking forward to that happening. There'll be a collaboration between the marketing personnel at the History Museum and the marketing personnel here at School City. That'll continue. We don't want to leave anyone out in terms of enjoying what the collection enhanced, as it were, will offer. So that marketing campaign, there are definite campaign goals. We want to keep the public informed. We don't want to just start and then all of a sudden say, here's the open house. We want to keep people informed in terms of how's the packing going? How's the moving going? What's happening? You know, how is everything progressing? We want to celebrate the collaboration, the collaboration between two museums. There are museums closing all over the United States. Part of it certainly being because of the pandemic that we've experienced and are experiencing. The collaboration of two museums, but the collaboration of two cities. One of the things we've heard loud and clear from the History Museum was we are so excited to be able to add the Mishawaka perspective to our museum. Yes, we have some Mishawaka-based items and whatnot, but we've not been really able to tell the Mishawaka story and we're looking forward to doing that. And so our opportunity to help that and to have some input into how that might happen is certainly an exciting opportunity for us. You'll see news releases in the media, you'll see website page changes, you'll see e-blasts, you'll see social media campaigns, all of this again being coordinated by the marketing personnel from both organizations. The collection itself will be done through a transfer via resolution and assignment of property, personal property. School City of Mishawaka cannot donate directly to a nonprofit. So the process has to include, first of all, transferring the collection to St. Joe County, who in turn will transfer it to the History Museum. Again, that will be done through resolution and then finally, when we're looking at the transfer, through assignment of personal property. This will include the entire collection. There are all kinds of special words used when you're talking about museum assets. You know, collection refers to the artifacts that have been brought into the museum. You have items that may not be part of the collection. You have all of the records, all of the supplies, all of the props. All of those things will be transferred to the History Museum. But before that transfer takes place, we think it's very important, first of all, for School City of Mishawaka to identify those items that should be kept here in the school system. Now, there are some that can go and it'll make perfect sense, but there are other things that should stay here. We feel the same way in our conversations and discussions more through Mr. Barker, but with the City of Mishawaka, to be able to say, there are some things that need to stay here. Let's identify those things, but let's also work with the History Museum. They are more than happy to help us in, we were talking about the displays that are throughout the community. Those don't have to stop. You know, we're talking about displays that will be shown in the new city hall. Those may be able to rotate because you don't have to keep all of those. Some items will be permanent here, but others, you do have access to, in many ways, the entire collection and perhaps additional items as you're working with the History Museum. So we're excited about that. And of course, items that are part of the Mishawaka Fire Department are included in that whole idea of working with the City of Mishawaka. As far as exhibits and displays, please remember that the History Museum is a regional museum. They appeal to the region and they also reflect the region. They have over 50,000 visits per year. That's exciting to me to think that our collection could have the potential to touch that many people. The current, there is a Kids First area in the History Museum. And to be honest, when we walked in, I think Lisa and myself were both thinking, we can fill this. We can make this exciting. There is more that can be done here. And after the History Museum had seen our collection, they felt the same way. Where will things go? We already start to have that in our mind. But the collection will go more places than just that Kids First area. It will go throughout the museum because some of the things that we have are not just for children. They will appeal to people of all ages and so they will go throughout the museum in different exhibits and displays. Others, to be very, very transparent, others will go in storage to begin with, to be used in the future. Typically, a museum has 15% of its holdings on display at any given time. So storage is a major challenge for any museum, the size of the History Museum, and also even for us in being a smaller entity. We're excited to say that any item that is displayed will have a donor plaque that reads, donated by Hannah Lindell Children's Museum of School City of Mishawaka. So that's exciting for us. It will always be commemorated. Think 50 years in the future. You know, I know I won't be here, but there is a certain peace of knowing that people will still know where those items came from. The Children's Museum, while I have said Kids First, that will not be the name that we keep. That will be reimagined, if you will. The space will be reimagined. The name will be reimagined. I can't tell you what that is. We haven't gotten there at this point. But it will reflect the collection that we're bringing to the History Museum and it will reflect the programming. We're hoping at some point in the future that there will be a part-time, if not full-time director in that area that can very much focus on the collection that the History Museum is receiving. We have some milestones. Not all of them, as you looked at the plan, not all of them have dates because we simply don't know those dates at this point. You'll see the first milestone is November 1st for us to have our board approvals. What has taken place so far is on Monday of this week, the History Museum's board was asked to approve the plan that we saw and the process that we're going through. And they very much liked what they saw. What they asked for us to do is to prepare a budget, which we were also doing anyway in collaboration for Mishawaka. And so that budget, what they want to have happen is it is approved, but will receive final approval upon the executive board receiving that budget. And they will give final approval. So it does not have to go through the board again. So as soon as that budget is approved through both groups, that final approval will in fact occur for the History Museum. We, I have a to-be-determined, but storage area. Before we ever talked to the History Museum, they were looking to secure additional storage area. Now that makes it even more important than it was previous to that. But that has not been an easy task. They're looking for probably about 20,000 to 25,000 square feet in storage and because they are museum items, they have certain needs that might not be true of another kind of item being stored. So it may very well be that if they do not identify storage area in enough time for us to get things moved, we may have to look at temporary storage for our items. What will happen with the items once they are transferred is they will probably, the perfect situation would be that they would go in some sort of a holding area where the History Museum would go through each and every piece and there is a specific process to accession items into the collection. There'll be other items that maybe, you know, enter the exhibits or the displays in another way other than being, you know, officially part of the collection. But that process will need to take place as well. That does not in any way stop us from moving items. Once they're moved, I'm just explaining that they will need to have a place to process all of that. Also, we are in the process, in fact, we are having a meeting tomorrow morning to further determine exactly what moving will look like. We've got probably about 7,500 square feet back there of items that need to be moved. Some need to be packed, some need to be packed in very special ways. So we have got to put together a plan as to how that's going to happen and how much time that might take and what resources we will need. We are working under the goal of June 30th, 2021, that space will be available for repurposing. That is our goal. We're staying, we're staying true to it. There are always things that can happen, we all know that, but that is what we're operating under. And then at some point, we plan to have a great big open house, grand opening and all that kind of thing to celebrate all the work that everyone has done. You have the plan. I'm going to tell you that probably every T isn't crossed and every I isn't dotted because there are still pieces of information that we have to gather and put together. But I hope that you have the spirit of the plan, you know where we're going, you know what we're working on, and I hope you're as excited about this as we are. So I'll turn it, I think, over to Mr. Newman, unless there are questions that I might answer.
Are there any questions for Ms. Fai? Well, thank you. It was a very thorough presentation and we're delighted with the, I'm delighted, you know, that the museum has found such a good place and such a good home. I'm familiar with the History Museum and it's a very solid visionary, forward-thinking organization and I can't think of a better partner.
I wish you could see their enthusiasm with this. They just, this for them is a no-brainer. They're so excited to be able to add this perspective. So at some point, you will see that, I'm sure, but very, very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then that will take us to item 9.05, which is Recommendation to Approve a Resolution Transferring the Personal Property at the St. Joseph County, Indiana. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. As Jan had mentioned previously, in order to facilitate the transfer of personal property constituting the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum, the administration is requesting approval of a resolution authorizing myself and Superintendent Barker of School City of Mishawaka to sign documents and take other appropriate actions in order to transfer the collection to St. Joseph County, Indiana. St. Joe County passed two resolutions on October 20th. One resolution essentially accepting the transfer from School City of Mishawaka and another that authorizes the transfer of those same assets to the History Museum. The two-part transfer is necessary as the school is not permitted within Indiana statute to transfer property to a nonprofit. statute to transfer property to a nonprofit organization for no dollars. However, a school corporation may transfer property to another unit of government. A county unit of government is in fact permitted to make a transfer of property to a nonprofit, such as the History Museum, for $0 if that property is to be used for educational purposes. Approval of this resolution again authorizes School City of Mishawaka Administration to move forward with the transfer of the Hannah Lindell Children's Museum collection. And as Jan had mentioned, the process of physically transferring the items will not take place until well into calendar year 2021.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved to approve the recommendation, approve the resolution transferring personal property to St. Joseph County. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Takes us to item 9.06, Recommendation to Approve the 2020-2021 Administrative Salary Ranges. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Over the past, sorry, the senior leadership team is recommending approval of administrator salary ranges for 2020-2021. The majority of pay ranges remain the same as previous years. Salary ranges that were modified have been highlighted in yellow on the document. The four elementary assistant principal positions were added, as these were new administrative positions for the 2020-21 school year. That Mishawaka High School attendance coordinator position was eliminated, and two supervisors of exceptional learners were added with the retirement of the assistant director of exceptional learners. Overall, the number of certified administrative positions has increased by four to a total of 34. As far as non-certified administrative staff, the benefits specialist position was reclassified to benefits coordinator, and the coordinator of food services was reclassified to director of food services in an effort to more accurately reflect the responsibilities of those two positions. The number of non-certified administrative positions, however, remains the same at a total of 31. Happy to answer any questions the board may have, but we are requesting approval of these admin salary ranges as presented.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation on the administrative salary ranges. Is there any discussion on the motion or questions for Mr. Newman? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 9.07, Recommendation to Approve 2021 Support Staff Pay Increases. Mr. Newman.
All right. I think they swapped us, Matt. It's fine. Over the past several weeks, members of the senior leadership team have discussed pay rate increases for members of our operational and educational support staff. The goal of these discussions is to ensure School City of Mishawaka has employee compensation that attracts new employees and retains current employees within our school corporation. For calendar year 2021, operational support staff increases will range from 2% to 4.1%. Educational support staff increases will range from 2% to 3.9%. An employee's increase will vary depending on their job or position, years of experience, and their current rate of pay. In order to receive a pay increase, employees must have been hired into their current position on or before March 31st, 2020, unless a new minimum rate of pay for the position was established. Ignoring year-to-year turnover savings, the estimated cost for these pay increases is approximately $125,000, with the average pay increase for eligible employees at approximately 2.6%. And there's an error in the background statement. It should be 2.6%. If approved, pay rate changes will take effect with the January 15th, 2021 payday.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation on the support staff pay increases. Is there other, is there any discussion on the motion or questions for Mr. Newman? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9.08, Recommendation to Approve the Purchase of Fortinet Firewall. Mr. Motlin.
Good evening. The firewall is the district's first line of defense or security guard when you're talking about the internet in preventing and addressing cybersecurity attacks. School City of Mishawaka's current firewall is 10 years old and is due for replacement to provide up-to-date security and additional network capacity. Since it does act as that security guard, it actually has to inspect everything that goes through it. And with our additional network activity with students and teachers now online, that device actually has to look at every piece of traffic going through it. With that increased amount of traffic, it's super important that we update our firewall hardware and our processing on that firewall. So, to best select that firewall solution, we defined some requirements and specifications. We looked at cost, that it be hosted here locally and not in the cloud, that it have high availability for those peak performance opportunities where we get that extra surge of network. We want to be able to meet that capacity so that no network infrastructure is turned away, and also integrate that features with our current network. We want it to be able to talk to our network, be able to work within it, and be able to do that. We also reached out to local other area districts to determine how those would interact and how they, what their experiences were with their firewalls to determine, and just get some of that information back from them. Also, what vendor would provide training and support. We selected and explored options for evaluation, and then set up some test network solutions here on site to make sure that they would work before we made the selection. So, we actually tested three different appliances here on site to ensure that they would do and meet the need that we had. After that, we evaluated those options and selected the best solution at a cost of $101,240. The Fortinet Fortigate 1100E Firewall meets or exceeds all those criteria identified. So, it's recommended that the board approve the purchase of the Fortinet Firewall from Automated Data Systems.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved.
I have a question. Not to plagiarize, but what's the funding source for the purchase of the software?
Through the
Do you have the questions?
Yep, through the operating referendum.
Okay, okay. How about, how many proposals did you receive?
We received three proposals from three different vendors with three different appliances to choose from.
Okay, and were any of them valid? So, were all three valid, or?
Three of them were in place and working, and we were looking at the responsiveness of those vendors, and two of them were more responsive than a third, but we did evaluate all three of them equally.
I think, I think some of the questions that David had were pretty spot-on. And usually, when we look at something like this, a nice spreadsheet that lays out, you know, the vendors and a lot of the information would stop some of these questions.
Yeah, I have it. I can, I can provide that.
Okay.
We did have all that when we were making our decisions.
Okay.
I will take this one.
Okay, okay. Thanks. All right.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Motlin? If not, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? The motion was to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Motlin.
Thank you.
9.09, Permission to Advertise Notice of Sale of Surplus Property. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. The school corporation has approximately 695 Apple iPads being held as surplus equipment. The administration would like to sell this surplus equipment to the highest bidder. In order to comply with Indiana Code, the school corporation needs to advertise the sale of this equipment in two newspapers one week apart and at least seven days prior to the deadline for receiving bids. The notice of sale will be published in the South Bend Tribune and Mishawaka Enterprise on October 29 and November 5, with bids being due no later than November 13, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. Myself and Mr. Motlin will evaluate those bids and determine the most responsive and winning bidder for the sale of that surplus property.
Move for motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant permission to advertise a notice of sale of surplus property as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, do I need to turn this in before I?
That's not on
I don't, I don't believe so. I think those are sticking around a little while longer.
The ones that we're looking at haven't been in use since March.
Take your head down.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the, all right. In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carried. Item 10.01, Second Reading of Policy 2370.05. Ms. Pettit.
Good evening, everyone. I ask that you consider this the second reading of the Virtual Education Program Policy, and the administration recommends that the Board of School Trustees adopt this policy as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the policy as presented. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pettit, and that takes us to 10.02, First Reading of New Policy. Ms. Pettit.
You know, that was the one thing that we had dropped before we published the policy, and we will be presenting that in November.
I have an old copy then.
Thank you.
Then that takes us to 11.01, Final Item on the Agenda, Public Announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees will be held on November 11, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Center, 1402 South Main Street in Mishawaka, Indiana. Is there any other business to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Are they going to have this scheduled?
Yes, well, the originally published schedule, but I think in November